Pamela, I'm trying to think of a good costume to wear down on the 31st to come to the party.
Oh.
Trying to get a good costume.
Think hard.
Well, my family's having... Okay, alright. Sorry for the delay, folks. We were having some technical difficulties. At this time, I would like to call to order the October 13th, 2020 Columbia Borough Council regular meeting. Could I have a roll call, please?
Counselperson B.
Here.
Counselperson Kaufman.
Here.
Counselperson Williams.
Here.
Counselperson Fitzgerald.
Here.
Counselperson Bevan.
Here.
Counselperson Litter.
Here.
Counselperson Martin.
Here.
Mayor Lutz.
Here.
Alright, and we do have a member of the ministerium here. So let's rise for the invocation.
Pastor Michael, as it has been counted out, we're taking down five of the ministerium's place. Father, we thank you so much for who you are, we thank you for your prayer for us, thank you for your merit, thank you for the long history of media, we thank you for the power of our country, thank you for our merit, we thank you for the things that you've done in this community, we thank you for your effective vision, our effective vision of all those who got this dream. That we need, how that we need, you, it is now. And pray God that all that's going on, the current people who are carrying the proceeds that after we made, we pray that it will survive. We pray that you can create us a spirit of unity and strength that we could forgive, pray for this upcoming birth, that God that you would be the stable factor, and that the natural process would be happening, that all people, we did grow, we did defend, and we will extend the humanity of this community forever and always.
Okay, would you like to lead us in the pledge of the flag?
Certainly. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Announcement of executive and information sessions. At 6:00 PM on October 13th, council held an executive session to discuss the purchase of the McGinnis property and a police union grievance. Are there any additions, deletions, or reorganizations of the agenda?
I wanted to ask why 11B, when and why that's been added? Because I didn't hear anything last week about this, and now we're considering a contract, I just wanted to know when it was added to the agenda.
I was actually going to propose that we table that.
Thank you.
Until we've had time to discuss that?
I think it would be more appropriate to discuss first that at the work session, the next time we have a work session.
The purpose of that contract is to hire a firm to work with us to manage any communication related to the purchase of this property. I wanted to make sure they have time to get out in front and work with us, so that the communication and the PR work is in place as we move forward. So timing is important, that's why it's been added. This is, the initial part of this contract falls well within the amount that I am authorized to spend, however, the end result of this will exceed, and I did not want to come back to you later and say, oh, by the way, I've been working with this firm, can you give me more money? So I think in all fairness and transparency, I bring it forward now, so that you guys will see, it's so much per month, I will exceed. If I don't, this year, it will be next year that will exceed the amount that I'm authorized to spend, so that's why I want to bring it forward to you as quickly as possible. It's very important, should everything move forward, that we have the public relations and communications piece in place. If you want to discuss it today and put it on the next agenda on the 27th, we can do that, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I don't know.
That still pushes us tight.
I don't think we should vote on it tonight, because we didn't really have time to talk about that or anything. I think we need time to digest this before we vote on it. That's how I feel, though.
Okay. I just want to emphasize, this is, I see it as important to manage this entire process as we move forward. But if you want to push it off for two weeks, and we discuss it today, and we bring it back on the agenda, that's fine, but that'll just give us two weeks less time to prepare everything for the timeline.
So are you not ready to discuss it now?
No, I'm in favor of discussing it, I just don't think we should vote on the contract tonight, because we, I just feel like we need to have time to think about it, it just seems like, I didn't hear about this till I saw the agenda.
Right.
So it was news to me that we weren't even going to do that part of it.
If the, at the end of our discussion, if we're ready to vote, would you be okay with that?
No, I don't think I would. Heather, you mentioned tabling it, I don't know, how do you feel about that?
Well, I was gonna table it based on some concerns from other counselors, that they weren't even, they were concerned about even discussing it tonight.
Because of what we discussed during the executive session?
Right.
Okay, I...
Because of the implication that everything is...
Going wrong there?
Yeah, and I think they're just worried about public perception that we're hiding things.
Okay.
I'm all in favor of doing it.
But I just want to understand, if things move forward, and we do, we do want to bring it on, and maybe you guys don't think we need it. If that's the concern, and you don't think we need the communication support to bring this forward, then we can just not have this. If we think this is an important step, then time is of the essence, I mean, we can move it to the next meeting, but beyond that, their effectiveness becomes less and less, if they don't have time for a communications piece to help roll out. And honestly, this is, if everything moves forward, this will be needed a lot during the rollout and during the due diligence period, as we move forward.
Perhaps we should just leave it on there then, and...
If we can leave it on and discuss it, and then at the end of the discussion, if you want to bring it back next week, we'll bring it back, if no, we'll take it off, I have no problem with that, but I don't want to table it too long, because timing is everything on this.
I think that's a good idea.
Alright, we will leave that on there then. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
I have a motion by Counselperson Williams, a second by Counselperson Kaufman, to approve the agenda as published, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Citizen comment, non-agenda items only. When I call your name, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record, and you will have five minutes, there is a five-minute time limit per person. The first sign up we have is Susan Love.
Susan Love, 118 South Fifth Street. A recent article from Business Insider entitled, "Armed Groups Say They Will Show Up To Polling Sites On Election Day, And Experts Are Afraid It Will Intimidate Voters," has alarmed me and made me think this is where, this is where we are as countrymen and women. Clearly, this tactic is for none other than intimidation during this specific election, as it has not been known to happen so blatantly during any other election year in the past few years. As a small borough that prides itself on making available enough polling sites and convenient for our senior and disabled citizens, for example, St. Peter's apartment building, and for all to have a fair and safe place for their votes to be counted, it would be a disgrace to allow a gathering of armed citizens or a militia, when, if you look at the definition of militia, you will see there is no need for their services, as described in this first part of the definition, which declares, "A military force that is raised from the civil population to supplement a regular army in an emergency." Or, for the second part to the definition, "A military force that engages in rebel or terrorist activities in opposition to a regular army, since our government has not declared war against its own citizens." Certainly, a polling place where all citizens of the United States are encouraged to exercise their right to vote for the person they believe would fulfill the promise, to the best of their ability, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of the United States, is off limits, and any militia should find it distasteful to be present there, since their stance usually pertains to protecting the rights given through our Constitution. Any other showing would then deem their behavior intimidating, terroristic. As a mother of a young adult with disabilities, I am concerned for her safety at all times, so we should not have to endure intimidation when I am teaching her how to exercise our rights. Under the guidance on rules in effect at the polling places on election day, on the Pennsylvania State website, it clearly states under the section firearms. Voters who have a legal right to carry a firearm cannot be prohibited from entering the polling place to vote. Pennsylvania law prohibits firearms in certain polling places such as schools and courthouses. Since a firearm is not necessary to the process of voting, the department recommends that counties prohibit firearms from being brought inside schools, especially if children are present, and in courthouses. Although a voter with a legal right to carry a firearm may not be precluded from voting, certain other behavior is illegal. Individuals inside or outside the polling place who behave aggressively with a firearm or who ostentatiously demonstrate that they are carrying a firearm, and that behavior either is intended to or has the effect of intimidating voters, will be removed, reported to the appropriate authorities for investigation and prosecution. My question is to our emergency management coordinator, what is your plan should the Borough of Columbia encounter a malicious plan to be present at polling places here? And will you make a statement that reiterates the state of law of Pennsylvania? And I thank you for allowing me the opportunity to voice my concerns.
Thank you. I will just say that our emergency management coordinator, Jay, is not here, and the polling places are, every one of them have a judge, and the judge, you know, makes sure that there's things, that the laws are followed inside and out, they're responsible for that action, but we will talk to Jay, and you can...
I'll pass it on to Jay.
Pass it on to Jay? Thank you. Next sign up we have is Frank Dautrich.
Thank you, Frank Dautrich, 1001 Iron Grove Pike. Heather, when you approved the minutes, you just approved one minute, or is there two separate minutes, is there one for the public and one for the staff or whoever? Is there only one minute?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. One other thing's for you, Mark. I got this brochure in the mail from the state on the rehabilitation they're going to do on 30th, so you're really the go-to person, so I thought, I've got to ask you this. Number five on here says, "Improving Columbia Borough's Route 462/Second Street intersection by adding an artistic-traffic-calming-central-medium feature." I don't have a clue what that is.
I can explain it to you, the E is...
Just roughly.
They are putting a planted median on our end of 462, so that traffic is channelized and protected from making inappropriate movements. I can pull up a picture of it, if you want, Frank, you can stop in some time, I'd be glad to show you what it is. The state, and I think it's on that flyer, has launched a website for this project that opened today. If you go to that website, there are images galore, it's probably too much, it gets very confusing, but I can, if you want to come in, I can show you exactly what it is, and if next meeting you want to show it up on the screen, we can put it up on the screen and show the residents what it is. It's just, again, it's on the elevated part of the bridge, as you approach Second, where those wing roads come out, there is a channelization in there to help protect traffic.
I'll give you a call.
Sure. Hard to describe in any more detail than that.
I was waiting for them to have a public hearing on this, and to show what all they were going to do, maybe to high school, or where they were going to do it, but I guess through the virus, they didn't do that.
Correct.
Now, I can call, there's a gentleman here, you can call and give him your agenda too, but I'm just appalled that they're putting the bikes, the bike paths on the bridge. We have the deal down below, all the piers are there, and I just feel they're missing the boat of what they could do for this area by putting, redo the bridge, whatever you got to do, but save that extra money for putting the things in for the bikes, put that down below. Now, maybe they can't, because that's not their part of the road, it could be whoever owns the piers down there, I'm not sure, but I feel they're doing a big disservice by doing that up there, and we already have the piers there. We got the biggest part of the cloth down there, it's a matter of putting a deck on there with railing, what it would do for this area would be bigger than anything to me that's been done. Are we going to talk about the McGinnis Airport tonight? It's on the agenda, you had a discussion on it, and I'm not sure where this is going.
We're going to discuss the...
The contract on the McGinnis.
The P, no, not the contract, no. Just the PR for...
That was my understanding. Considered, contract for communications and PR support purchase of the McGinnis Airport, we're going to discuss that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I just, I'm excited, so I'll keep my comment, thank you.
And Pastor, did you have another comment? Or were you just signed up?
No, I just...
For the invocation? Okay, thank you, I just wanted to make sure you didn't want to speak.
I did.
Oh, okay.
Just curious, what is the process for strategy for some of the unrest between different groups of whatever it is, what had, because we pretty much have a great hand.
Come on up to the microphone, that way we can make sure everyone at home can hear you as well.
I guess I wasn't sure if you answered the question, but all of the people who are present have to be semi, that's somewhere in the ballpark of what we would do if whatever groups would show that pose. And I'm certainly, we're right on top of them, so, and I was the one who lost it, I don't want to add an action.
Well...
I know you have a written offer.
Well, I can tell you, I am the judge in the seventh ward, and the safety and everything outside those places is, it's the responsibility of the judge in that ward to make sure that they see if there's issues or whatnot. Some of the wards, I'm not sure in Columbia, may have a constable, and if they do, they would have, they would have their own, they would have their protocols on how they would engage assistants. My ward, we do not have a constable, so my call would be to 911 to engage law enforcement.
I guess I was wondering more, but I guess I was wondering that, should we leave something like that to, to just, we'll deal with it when it happens, we don't think that we should think about that ahead of time?
As for the police chief, and I could add, we have received a number of concerns expressed, in fact, the last meeting, had someone bring up concerns as well, and police agencies throughout the county are receiving similar concern. County law enforcement is in the planning stages now for addressing any kind of civil disturbance or concern at the poll location, so we are getting together, we are completely playing together.
Do we have policies already in place that directs people not to carry armed weapons to the voting booth, or not?
As a judge, you...
As a judge, I can tell you that the only time we can restrict someone's ability to carry is if it is prohibited by the location where we are, meaning if we are a school or a courthouse, they are not permitted to carry, but anyplace else, they are permitted to conceal carry, and of course, open carry if, you know, because that's Pennsylvania.
Thank you for your space, if you could convey to that group, our experience of what happened, we have seven groups in our community between the people's already and who has the feet, and if it's really necessary, we might be not there to, to, thank you for listening and...
Pastor, Pastor, one more thing, to answer your question. As the chief said, the county chiefs are putting together a plan to deal with anything that may come up. We will also notify the judges at the polling places, and I know they're probably going to receive instruction from the county, but we will notify them that if they see this, contact us. If someone walks in there and they see that they're having one, just give us a call so that we're aware, okay? Not that we won't do it, because they have that right to exercise their rights, but if we know, then we can begin that preparedness, so we will do that.
Because, from what I can understand, it's that a lot of people wanting to turn out of it, that was creating some of the tension between groups, and so the people who just want to vote, tensions have got to come, so should not feel threatened by one, you know?
Yeah, so in addition to whatever the county comes up with, you can assure that we will instruct the folks at the polls to, just give us a courtesy call saying, there's someone here that is armed.
I most certainly convey your concern.
Thank you. It was more for...
Absolutely, yes.
Yep. Alright. Minutes for approval. Could I have a motion to approve the Borough Council meeting minutes from September 22nd, 2020? And a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Counselperson Kaufman, a second by Counselperson Fitzgerald, to approve the Borough, approve the Borough Council meeting minutes from September 22nd, 2020. All in favor? Aye. Aye, anyone opposed? Alright. Presentations, none, but we have Mayor Lutz, you have a proclamation for us.
Yes. Before I read this proclamation, let me say, former chief of police, Joe Greenia, passed away in the past week, there's a funeral on Monday, please remember him in your prayers. Joe put a lot of years, basically, from out of the time he got out of high school to the time he retired, he was a police officer in Columbia Borough, so please remember him. Now, I have a proclamation here to read, that is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and this is important, the chief can attest the fact that domestic violence calls that our officers respond to run the gamut, an officer never knows what they're going to get into, and domestic violence is one of the main problems with the breakup of families and causes of other things down the road. So let me read this proclamation. "To designate the month of October 2020 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that affects people of all races, ages, gender, and income levels, and whereas domestic violence is widespread and affects over four million Americans each year, and whereas one in three Americans have witnessed an incident of domestic violence, and whereas children that grow up in violent homes are believed to be abused and neglected at a higher rate than national, than national average, and whereas domestic violence costs the nation billions of dollars annually in medical expenses, policing court costs, shelters, foster care, sick leave absenteeism, and non-productivity, and whereas only a coordinated community effort will put a stop to this heinous crime, and whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for citizens to learn more about preventing domestic violence and to show support for the numerous organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy services and assistance to victims. So now therefore I, Leo Lutz, Mayor of the Borough of Columbia, of County, do hereby proclaim the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and urge our citizens to work together to eliminate domestic violence in our community. And with that goes, if you see something, you think something, contact the department and let us look into it. The life you save, you know, despite being a little cautious, you could save a life. Thank you, that's all I have, in present."
Thank you. Alright. Chief, anything from you?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Alright, for public comment on the items on the agenda, there will be a three-minute time limit per person, per topic. If you do want to comment or discuss something, please raise your hand, make sure I can see you. Alright. Could I have a motion to ratify the Greenia settlement agreement? Alright, I have a motion by Counselperson Stevens, a second by Counselperson Bergard, to ratify the Greenia, to ratify the Greenia settlement agreement. This was not in your packet, but it had previously been provided in executive session. As I stated in my email, I had signed that on the 25th, so that, and I verified that the signed copy from Mr. Greenia did match the copy that we all saw in our packet, so that it was in force at the time of his passing. We just have to make it official now, that we are officially passing, you know, the, that we're okay to ratify that, that we're okay to have that agreement. Does anyone have any other questions or comments or concerns? Alright, I have a motion by Counselperson Stevens, a second by Counselperson Bergard, to ratify the Greenia settlement agreement. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? That carries. Yes?
Frank Dautrich, do we have a right to know any of the content?
That, that contract, I believe, is, is subject to, subject to the right to know law, meaning that I don't believe that we would probably release the contents of that just because it has to deal with the police pension issues. You could, I don't want to say, you know, it's hard to be put on the spot, but I just don't believe that that would be something that would be released, but if you want to send in a right to know request, we would certainly evaluate that.
If there was a payout... If there was a payout to the Greenia family or whoever, would that be done with insurance?
It's not insurance money, it comes out of the police pension fund.
Out of the pension fund?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. 10B. Could I have a motion to direct Labor Council to issue a decision to deny the third step grievance with respect to the Columbia Borough Police Officers Association? And a second. I have a motion by Councilperson Bergard, a second by Councilperson Kaufman, to direct Labor Council to issue a decision to deny the third step grievance with respect to the Columbia Borough Police Officers Association. Any questions or concerns with this? And that will, you will direct Mike?
Yep.
Okay. I have a motion by Councilperson Bergard, a second by Councilperson Kaufman, to direct Labor Council to issue a decision to deny the third step grievance with respect to the Columbia Borough Police Officers Association. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? 10C. As I had mentioned at a previous meeting, I wanted to revisit a few of the resolutions that have been passed last year. I found that some of the things in them were needed updated because they did not reflect what we were doing now. In the first one that we are calling Resolution 2020, Protocols and Rules for the Quorum for Public Meetings, you can all see the changes that I made there. There was a reference to the work session starting at six. I changed that to seven because that's what we're actually doing. A few other things that I wanted to make sure that we put in there about the agendas and packets are posted to the website. Does anyone have any questions or concerns with the changes that have been made?
I think all your changes were relevant and needed. The only thing that I would question is the absence of an information session description under the definitions. Is that something that does not need to be defined? Or is that just something that we're eliminating completely from council's meeting options?
It was not in the original one, so I didn't even think about that. I didn't think about adding that.
I remember we had the conversation about information sessions versus executive sessions early on when we were talking about, should we even have them, what the differences were between the two. I think they were significant enough probably to have a definition for information sessions if we do want them to exist.
I think that's absolutely fine. If you'd like to have that, there's no reason not to.
Yep. Does anyone else have any other questions or concerns? What I'll do is I will add that definition in, and then I can bring it back for the next meeting for, for a vote. All right? And that was... Oh, shoot. I didn't get a motion.
That's right.
All right. What we can, so the Resolution 20-21 is the Protocols for Elected Officials Conducting This one, I think I just had, you know, a few minor things. Does anyone have any questions about this one? No?
I was curious to know why, I mean, I'm not saying it's right or it's wrong, I'm just curious to know, why the mayor would be removed and borough manager would be added? Is that, I'm just curious. I'm not saying it's right or it's wrong. I'm looking at Section 4. B is one, Section 2, C is one as well. Section 4, I'm sorry, 4C. Yeah, 4C, there's twice.
Yeah. I wanted to make sure that, you know, work was included. I mean, there were a lot of, a lot of those things, I just, I didn't know why the mayor was on there as...
I would agree with that. Some of those things certainly, if you're looking at like letters addressed to council members, marks in charge of the day-to-day operations, the mayor, that's far outside the mayor's scope of his authorities or duties.
That was kind of the way I looked at it. I mean, he gets the stuff for the police. I didn't...
Just curious.
Yeah.
I'm going to say that needs to be looked at. Would it depend on any of our codes?
What?
In terms of...
The mayor should be involved in all activities and has the right to attend all meetings. If the mayor has the right to attend all meetings, he should have the right to see all correspondence, like it is the council. You can do what you do, want to do, check with our attorney.
So, in looking at the first one here at 4B, if we're talking about letters addressed to the individual council members, I see the mayor needing to step in at times to run the meetings and/or participate. I see no problem including him. I think making sure that the council member is the manager and the mayor are included. I have no problem with that.
Yeah, I think that heading's just a little bit confusing. Because if you're talking about just letters addressed to individual council members, the manager will be the person that distributes those if they come into the office.
Right. And it would go to everyone here, the seven plus one, the mayor. So, I have no problem with that at all. That makes sense to me. And what was the other one, Todd?
Well, there's...
Oh, 4D.
4B, 4C.
So, correspondence, yeah, again, to me, correspondence going out, we would always be including all seven as a mayor as well.
I was just curious because, I mean, it's an existing resolution. It was in there before. Somebody felt it was significant to have it in there.
I will add theirs back in.
I think it's the only change we have then.
Yep. I'll make theirs changes and then we can get theirs back in for...
Yeah, we'll put them in the next agenda.
Yep.
Excellent.
All right. New business. Consider facilities use request for the 900 block of Locust Street. Could I have a motion to consider this facilities use request? And a second. I have a motion by Councilperson Kaufman, and a second by Councilperson Stevens, to consider the facilities use request for the 900 block of Locust Street. Is anyone here representing this? No?
Council President Zink.
Yes.
I spoke to Mr. Strickler this afternoon because this event is on the same night as the Parks and Rec party at Locust Street Park, and I wondered if we can consolidate in some way. But he explained to me that this event is more a neighborhood event. People who have been around each other and they know they're safe. So, yeah, not necessarily open to the public.
Madam President, and just beg your question to you also, ma'am, I would hope that the hours fall within the hours that have been previously established by LIMC Resolution that all LIMC municipalities, for trick-or-treat, that it falls within those hours. 9:00 PM, I'm pretty sure, falls outside those hours.
This is on the 31st. Trick-or-treat's actually on the 30th this year. So, that would be two separate events on this.
Yeah, but what I'm saying, I would hope that it stays within those hours. Because you can see, it's obviously, it's intended. And so is that intended to take the place of people going to the streets trick-or-treating.
That's a private event.
Yeah. Well, yeah. But I would hope you keep it. I think 9:00 PM, at this time of year, gets to be a little late.
It's contained. It's only a couple blocks of the neighborhood. So...
I think the normal trick-or-treat's over at 8:00.
6:00 to 8:00.
I had a question. Do we know, they have marked here they want two porta-pots. Are they, did we get a thing to show where they're putting them? Do we know, are they expecting us to provide those, or are they providing them?
It's been very clear by Pam that we do not furnish porta-pots.
Okay.
But I will follow up with her.
Yeah, we need to follow up to see if they've given us a map showing the location because...
Do they need insurance?
And that was my next question. Did we get insurance from them? Because I don't, I didn't see that included.
I did not see that on this one. If you are comfortable looking forward, you can approve it contingent upon receipt of insurance and a site map showing the location of the road closures on the porta-pots.
Well, and I'm also concerned they want us to provide trash cans?
No, that's, they provide all that. They'll have them out there.
Okay, because it's down here in this section, it says, "Equipment personnel required." Safety cones, street barriers, and trash cans.
Okay. We'll verify that too.
With the food trucks, do they need any other permission for food trucks to be in the borough?
Not during a special event, no.
I have a question. For an event like this, how much does insurance cost?
I've never gotten insurance like that personally, so I don't know. It's usually not very expensive for them to get a...
I consulted with my insurance agent in preparation for these kind of things. And he claimed that if you already have owners, you can get like a...
A rider.
A rider, which he said was minimal cost. That's what he told me.
Okay.
And that was State Farm, so I don't know.
Yeah.
Okay. So...
They just go with their...
Yeah, they just need that.
I will remind council that this is, these forms, although I think it was a move in the right direction, the chief and I and Pam have had a couple of meetings now to look at this. Because I think the questions you're asking are the very things that we need to improve on these forms to get the details down. This is one of the old ones. Pam is right now developing a new form. We've given her a lot of resources. So, we're improving this process as we go along, and I'll give kudos to Pam for all the work that she's done to get this in place. But this is still one of the ones under the old system right now. So, we will follow up with those details should you want to approve this.
That's Pam Armel, not Pam.
Yes, Pam Armel, not...
I think this is the third iteration, I think, since I've been here with these forms today. I would also, I think it's fair to mention that the anticipated attendance as well, under the 250 maximum for an outdoor gathering for the state's guidelines for the meeting.
This is my neighborhood, can I just go up there? Can I go up?
Sure. You can. We give you permission for that.
Jack, are we going? We're going to crash.
Sounds like fun.
So, I have my motion to include insurance, porta-pots, locations, and...
Trash cans.
Trash cans, which Mark said he would discuss in the forum.
Yep.
So, on...
So, you want to say, "A motion to approve the facilities use request for the 900 block of Locust Street contingent upon receipt of proof of insurance, map locating porta-pot locations, and clarification on trash can usage."
Porta-pots, they will provide them.
They should.
Well, yeah.
We don't provide them. We just want to make sure we know the location.
That needs to make, be made clear to them.
Yeah, we just need to know where they're going to be so that we have that. All right. And Howard, are you okay seconding that motion? Okay. So, I have a motion by Councilperson Kaufman, and a second by Councilperson Stevens, to approve the facilities use request for the 900 block of Locust Street, contingent upon receipt of proof of insurance, map locating porta-pots, and clarification on trash can usage. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Next, we have the contract for communication and PR support for the purchase of the McGuinness
Want to take it?
Yep, please, because I don't quite know what to say.
Sure. So, in our discussions, and I say our discussions, in my meetings with the Lancaster EDC and the Columbia EDC, with the past work that the borough did to acquire this land the last time, and now we're moving forward again, I think how we communicate this out and how we manage the message is important. And one of the suggestions and one that I agree with is to get on retainer, affirm that staff can work with as we move forward with this. Should there be any difficult communication topics, or we need to get public input, or we need to have these discussions, to have a professional team come along beside us and help us manage that communication. So, that's what this firm does. They work, one of their niche specialties is working with government agencies. When I talked to them, they talked about, they've often been called in if there is a road project that's going to cause major disturbance or change the character of a community, and how you manage that message and get it out to your residents. And so, because this has the potential to be a significant issue here in this town, I think it's important that we manage our message carefully and we communicate as clearly as possible. So, after talking to them, they did submit this contract in to us. I feel comfortable moving forward with them, but I will leave it up to you if you want to do that. Based on the discussion in the beginning, it's my understanding that you'd like to consider it, read through it, and then bring it back to the next meeting for a final vote. If that's still the way you want to do it, we can do it that way. And if you have questions now, I'd be glad to answer them.
I have a question. How did you find this?
That was one that John B. Miller, who was on the call today, had recommended because he had used them in the past for big projects that may have some public concerns.
Is this something that we should...
Is this something that we should have two other people bid on?
I think it's under the threshold.
It's under the threshold for that, so we don't have to, because they are, this is their specialty, I feel comfortable moving forward with them.
And this is also professional services, so you don't have to bid those, yeah.
I was just going to ask you what the threshold is then, because six thousand a month for the first three months is, would that exceed it?
But you are, because it's a professional services contract, it is outside of that scope, yeah.
I will just say, I, I do agree that with the things that have been discussed at this point, it will be important for us to have someone help with communication going forward, because we certainly don't want any member of the public to feel that we've hidden anything from them.
Correct.
We don't want them to think that we haven't done our due diligence, and we certainly don't want to think that we are avoiding communication, which, when we have limited in-house resources, is very easy to give the appearance that you are avoiding communication just because everyone is so busy. So having someone that, that's their job is to communicate, I think, is, is important and helpful.
And to be clear, this is on retainer, so this is not a flat fee, this is to engage them and as we need them. And I'll be really clear, I, I think to initially engage with them would have been well within the range of my ability to, to negotiate, but I did not want to come back to you guys at a later time and say, "Oh, by the way, we've been using this firm, I've now reached a limit," which, which I wasn't in the same idea. Now looking at Evan, that, that may not be a, a need, but I didn't want to end up spending a lot of money on something that you guys weren't aware of. So I'd rather earn the side of, of bringing these things forward to you and, and have you guys discuss them. If you want to move forward, that, I think it's important, if not, we will, we will move forward without that.
I have a few questions if I may. I agree with Heather, I think managing our message and especially the information dispensation regarding this conversation that we're having, which is probably about to go public at some point, is crucial to manage correct information.
Right.
To avoid hearsay, social media rumors, accusations, and managing the truth of the matter with a professional that can do it in a way that they understand not miscommunication, which I often do, saying things that run away, even though the intent is right. But I do have a few questions here, if I can ask.
Please.
This contract is, I think, from October to July, can I take this off, October to July first, are we committed to this, even if we decide, even if a decision renders this, these services not needed after two months, are we still obligated to them, or does it go month to month, and everything that we're committing to is their pricing structure?
Correct, it's, it's a retainage, so it, as we need them, we pay for their time on a per hour basis. If we don't need them, then there's no fees expended for them.
They're not offering to represent us in any way. What I mean by that is if there's a press conference or something happens that needs somebody outside of us or a person to speak to the press, they're not offering to do that, but they're offering to coach somebody internally to do that, right?
Both, they, they, they will coach us, and if needed, they will, they will provide that service to us.
And that's out, but that, I would think representation is outside of the scope of this contract, right, and additional service?
They, it'd be on a, on an as-needed basis again, so if, if we need them, and they said that they would come to, say we wanted to do a, a, a public workshop or a public meeting, they would come and, and help us during that public workshop. I, I don't see a need for them to speak for us, but to, to guide us through, but they are available at the meeting to help us through that process. If that answers your question.
Yes, it does. You also mentioned in here the establishment of communication resources, including websites, purchase of dedicated URLs.
Yeah.
Content creation, brochures, printed material, on and on, which I think is all relevant and needed. I think it's really a smart strategy. I'm assuming those services are not included in this month-to-month either. They'd be outside of this scope and be built based on their pricing structure and.
So, again, all of it is built on their pricing structure, there's no flat fee for, for their usage, whatever, if, if we decided we need two of those, then, then we would simply pay it in an almost in a time and materials contract, as we need them, we'll pay for those services.
Alucard.
Alucard, yes, that's what we said.
I don't understand why we can't communicate with our public, like, with updates and so forth. Why do we have to pay someone to communicate with them? I just don't understand that piece.
Sure, I, I, I think because of the size and scale of this project, it's important to have someone to help manage communication. Communication is, is critical, it's, it's one of those pieces that I see, and, and Tom, I'll, I'll look to you as if this is what you do for a living, I, I see the need for having good, clear communication as this moves forward. Not that we can't communicate, not that we won't communicate well, but sometimes how you say things is so important, and the words you use and how you present it, and we don't have the expertise here in staff to manage something like that on our own. I, I would feel comfortable having someone guide us through that, and if we don't need them a whole lot, I just think having them there to, to help manage that message is important for us.
And to your point, Mark, you know, that's the reason firms like this exist.
Right.
Because there is times, there are times when you need a professional to be able to, to control, help you control your message. And I don't necessarily, I mean, let's think back to, to our executive session and our discussion, and all the things and people and places involved in that conversation.
It's a lot of moving parts.
Not just, not just to help explain the decisions that we're making today, but it's how we lay the groundwork with the conversation that we start today for next year, for the year after, for the year after that, and how, how it sets this borough up for future success with other people, entities, stakeholders, wanting to be a part of our conversation.
Right.
It's, this is not a small conversation we're having, this is a very big conversation and very important, and I don't think that we, I don't think we can do without these kind of professional services at this point. It's more than just, hey, this is the minutes and this, this is, this is what we talked about.
Right.
This is a controlled conversation pointing to the future.
So, for example.
Measured and calculated.
The four sixty-two bridge project, PennDOT hired a firm, and they are managing the, a lot of the, the materials and stuff that come out, they're, they're putting the graphics together, they'll put the materials together. The state agency that builds roads all the time, they use these, these companies to help them manage the message.
What you get out of this is one message going out versus eight, ten messages, whatever, and people may be putting that message out different than the next person. This here will give you one message that goes out to the public, that's the message you live on.
Right, and we put that together with their guidance, it'll be our message, but they'll just help, they're, they're, the company will help us put it together and can do the collateral materials that we'd need to get it out.
And I, I mean, honestly, this is nothing against anyone, I, but I think, Sharon, part of the reason we're up here is because we noticed historically there was an issue with communication, and this way, we're sure that communication is going to happen appropriately for a huge, potentially huge project.
That involves more people than just the borough.
Yes, it does.
I think we're accountable, I think we need to be responsible to those others, outside the borough stakeholders as well.
Yep, yes.
Another question I have, press releases, they mentioned that in their bullet point list and their media list building, assuming they're going to help us write press releases and use their contacts in order to probably gain the best chance of getting published, and that's all part of the monthly.
Absolutely, talk through all that, yep.
And the only other question I had really was, well, two questions really. In the terms and conditions, item number twenty-eight, where they talk about, "We shall hold them, clients shall defend, indemnify, and hold Gavin communications harmless against any copyright infringements or intellectual property issues that they may cause." I don't necessarily like being liable for that. If we're paying folks to, to be careful, who are professionals, who know way about copyright law and trademark issues and all those folks more than we do, I would expect them to maybe manage that risk for us. I don't like that aspect of it.
I, I certainly, I, I understand what you're saying there. What I could tell you is that very limited indemnification can be solved very, very easily should something like that happen, because all we have to do, once somebody wrote, essentially in those cases, what you end up having is somebody writes a cease and desist letter and says, "Hey, stop using my, you know, my trademark image or words or whatever," and as long as you take it down, then there's no, it doesn't really go any further than that generally, there's no damages to that. So that is, that's, to me, that's not a, a huge deal. I certainly understand what you're saying, and, and I think they would be very careful. I don't think they want to ever get into that fight either, but that's a relatively small risk, I'll say, of, of something like that happening.
Would, would it be who of us to ask them to show us some kind of proof of errors and omissions policy that should cover those kinds of problems?
Yeah, absolutely, I would think, yeah, absolutely, yeah, yeah.
Where's the money coming from for this?
We'll take it out of, of either Fund Thirty or eighteen. Right now, we have it scheduled for Fund Thirty.
And the only other issue I would have is there's nothing mentioned here about any creative that they may suggest or submit to us and copyright release of that creative and that intellectual property. I would hope that they would allow in their contract for us to own anything that's created on behalf of the borough, whether it be a tagline, a headline, something that catches on, a Columbia, there's all that, a bag of chips, if that becomes popular and they created it, I want to own it.
Absolutely, yeah, no, we can, we can add something in there or do a, you know, a work made for hire agreement, which essentially says exactly what you just said, is that anything that they create for the borough as part of this project would be the property of the borough, yeah.
Yeah, okay, good, thank you.
Is there any issues I saw?
I just want to tell about what Heather said about the communication and how we were concerned about communication and transparency and so forth, but we were also concerned about spending money, and so that is why I'm asking, you know, the questions I asked.
Sure.
I would also, to that point, perhaps maybe the, the perception of lack of clarity, transparency, and good communication also cost the borough money in, in the form of lawsuits and investigations and weirdness that went on that was not even proven to be true. So it was, oh yeah, it cost the borough tons of time, staff hours, and legal fees. So I think not managing your message can also cost you.
And I agree.
I'd say we move on then.
I agree.
All right, with that said then, could I have a motion to approve the contract for communication and PR support for the purchase of the McGuinness Airport?
Based on answers to the questions, especially concerning copyright.
Contingent upon answers to the questions.
Evan and I will go back with them on those, yeah, absolutely.
All right. And a second.
Second?
A motion by Councilperson Kaufman, second by Councilperson Fitzgerald, to approve the contract for communication and PR support for the purchase of the McGuinness Airport. Contingent upon the, contingent upon the answers to the copyright question and others asked.
Can I, can I ask for a roll call?
Yes, could we do that by roll call, Teresa?
Councilperson Kaufman.
Yes.
Councilperson Williams.
Yes.
Councilperson Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Councilperson Stevens.
No.
Councilperson Littner.
No.
Councilperson McGurk.
Yes.
Council President Zink.
Yes. Yes.
Frank Dautrich, one thousand one, Ardenburg Pike. I don't know where it began, but I got to get something out because I only got three minutes. But I'm sitting there asking myself, did somebody give us a lot of free money somewhere? Why all of a sudden are we looking at buying another, hitting into another project? I would imagine it's, it's quite a lot of money. There's so many questions the public needs to know, even where yous are at now. Why do we want to do this? What do we want it for, you're hiring a firm to take care of it? We, the public, don't know if yous have a contract, we know nothing, we're in the dark. I would imagine yous know, because I've seen it on quite a few of the agendas on your executive session, that yous were having meetings on this. I'm confused, even in the contract itself, there's, there's, I, I looked at the, what they were charging here, and, and it's not the initial cost per month, there's also other charges that could be added into this. But my real question is, why do we need this? The last time they were going to buy it, the, the ground was contaminated, oh, we walked away from it. Now I think there's a brown field or something else you come up with, but everything is just up in the air here. Not only me, I got people asking me, I said, "Hey, come to the meetings and ask you people," because we know nothing. Is, is, if you just answer a couple questions, is the property on the multiple listings for sale?
Yes.
It is on sale?
Yes.
How much?
It's one million four hundred and ninety-five thousand is what it's listed for.
Do we have a contract on?
No.
No, we're working towards that right now.
So we're letting Galvin, whoever it is, they do all our, our work for us, which is going to cost us a lot of money. Sometimes I'll.
They're not doing the work. I'm, I'm, I would be running the deal if there is.
Yeah, Evan, our attorney is, is negotiating the sale and the process, they're, they're only managing the communication and the message.
Why do we want the property?
I'll, I'll say broadly for economic development.
Yeah.
I think this is the, the last bit of undeveloped land in this borough, and we want to work forward and manage the development of this so that we can bring tax money into the borough. That's the whole purpose.
I would probably be in back of you and patting you on the back if somebody other than the borough was not doing this. The property's been out there for years, been for sale.
Correct.
Where's, where's all the developers? Where's all the million dollar people? Little old Columbia borough, we got to go and, and we got to get in debt more and more. I just hope yous understand what you're doing.
I hear you, Frank.
I, I just hope so. Because we're, we're the ones going to be paying.
I understand that.
Three minutes left.
I, no, I, we, we hear you, trust me.
Yeah.
And, I mean, there's, there's a lot of tough questions being thrown around, and there's, there, this isn't, we're not taking this lightly, and as soon as, you know, something is solid and it doesn't jeopardize our position by telling you, we have every intention of coming. we have every intention of coming public with everything.
Well, it's already out there that you're going after it. Other times when you bought, you didn't want people to know because the bid would change from other interested parties. But here, it's out there. So, you know, if anybody else wants to bid in the meantime, they can. But I just don't know why, with everything we had going, why we don't treat what we have. Let's pay down some of what we got instead of getting in a debt fodder. We're going to be paying interest the rest of our lives. That's showing them we're going to be paying this interest. We're paying to borrow this money from these people. And by the way, where are we getting the money?
We already have the money. It's from the bond that we took out in 2016, initially to upgrade the sewer treatment plant. That money is still ours. So we're sitting on cash that we've already borrowed. We want to spend that down. We want to spend that debt bond money down. So we have it. We have it now.
So the money we borrowed, we are paying on.
Sure.
Sure. It's not free.
No, but we're paying on it regardless of whether we buy this land or not. We're already paying on. We have been for years. We don't want to hold money that we borrowed and not use it.
Do you know what the building is taxed at or the property? Do you know what the property is taxed at now?
We do.
What benefit is it to the borough?
To encourage the redevelopment of this site to greatly increase the taxable value of it, which will... So I'll say right now, it's about, we're getting what's that? It's our $3,000 in current tax value based on that property and based on the current assessment value. If we are successful in redeveloping this and in bringing people in, that will go up significantly, which will reduce the burden on our residents. And so there isn't a need to raise taxes because this is, as soon as this becomes developable, we put commercial property on there, there will be tax revenue brought into the borough. And that's what we're aiming at.
So if you get this, until you get it, until it gets sold and be developed and all, you're talking years down the road. And we're still not going to have any money coming in in the meantime.
If all goes well, it won't be years. It won't be years and years if it goes well.
Yeah. I mean...
And I'll tell you this, Frank, we take this very seriously. I think this is a fantastic opportunity for the borough to generate some more tax revenue. Every step along the way, we have the ability to say, no, this isn't working. We're getting out up until the point where we actually purchase the land. So we're going to do our due diligence. We're going to work through and make sure this is going to work best for the borough. And if we all see that and we're going forward, then we're going to do this because this is going to be, I believe, a great opportunity to bring revenue, to bring support, to bring jobs to this community.
And we're not doing this all on our own, Frank. We have a lot of help.
Yeah.
Trust me when I say that. We have a lot of help.
Well, you probably know more than what I do because if I was sort of sitting there right now, it would be a no, no, no vote. You got to look at the taxpayers of the town, the one that's footing the bill.
And that's the very reason we're doing this is because we're concerned about that.
So the conversation changed from contract with Gavin to the purchase of the property. I want to go back to the original agenda item, which Frank talked about, which was, why do we need?
Could you put your?
Sure, I'd love to.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
I don't like it myself.
I have trouble now if you're...
Yeah. Is why do we need to hire a communications firm to help us manage our message? Well, tonight it happened again. And I've been on Borough Council for three years. And practically every session, somebody gets up to the podium and shares misinformation. Misinformation that was gathered from either rumor, internet, social media, somebody whispering down the lane over and over and over again. It was mentioned tonight that the reason the borough did not buy, purchase the property for the McGinnis property was because of contamination. Now, unless you're in the executive sessions, you'd never know that.
Todd, I think there is public information about that out there.
Well, that's not why we didn't buy the property. We didn't buy the property because, can I share why we didn't buy the property in public?
I can answer that.
Simply because of the price at the time and the fact that the borough had no plans of what to do with the property in order to turn a profit or gain revenue off of it.
Right.
Period. That was the only reason. Sure, there was a study done that it was contaminated, but that wasn't the reason the borough didn't purchase it. So that's the truth of the matter.
I can answer that. I don't attend your executive sessions, but I can go back to years when this property was for sale and Mayor Vlachos put that on the floor. That it was contamination and they walked away from it. That's where I got it from.
That was before my time.
Yeah, right. You wasn't here at the time. I remember the mayor saying it's a $20 million property. And, you know, why would you walk away from a $20 million property if you had contamination that you could do something with? But I didn't agree it was a $20 million property, but that's what I heard. That's why the borough didn't buy.
So to clear the air, let me sure we're on the same page. During our due diligence period, we will verify and look into any and all environmental concerns on this site before we move forward with the final signing of paperwork and taking deed of the property.
You probably do more studies, new studies.
If need be, yes, absolutely. We need to make sure what we're doing. Absolutely.
There was something about the Phase 3 that wasn't done or something. I forget, they didn't go that far or something. I just, I don't know, so I'm not going to say that part of it. But I do know what was said back then.
Sure.
Question to me? Thank you.
Thanks, Frank.
All right. Presentation and acceptance of reports. Community development. Councilperson Kaufman.
Yes. I'm happy to report that the Columbia Parks, the Columbia River Park did an online request for donations and received enough money to cover the PA Outdoor Corps program.
Nice.
The council voted three months ago to assist if necessary. They do not need our assistance.
Nice.
So happy moving forward.
Excellent. I was down there this, I drove through there this weekend. I was thinking, I think I'm supposed to be doing this soon.
It's this week.
This week?
They started today. They're down there right now. Oh, not right now. They're down there this week.
All right. All right. Councilperson Stevens for finance.
Thank you. I want to discuss the acceptance of $45,320.85 for the estate of Clarissa M. Wocat to the Columbia Borough Shade Tree Commission. Mark, do you want to fill this?
Sure. So Ms. Wocat, in her will, is willing the $45,320.85 and it's based on a percentage of her estate value to the Shade Tree Commission, which I think is a fantastic gift and a wonderful gesture and her commitment to this community and this town. I have discussed this with Amy Evans, who is the chair of the Shade Tree Commission. I've discussed it with Evan. And we feel most comfortable, I wanted to bring it up today so you guys know it's coming. On the next meeting, there'll be a resolution for us to receive the money to ensure that the money is used only for the Shade Tree Commission and put it into a dedicated fund. So I want all that to be, it'll be out there in a resolution. You'll see it the next meeting. Amy has signed the receipt of information, the release. So she'll have that, so we'll have the money by that meeting or if not, whenever comes, there'll be a resolution. So it'll be a clear paper trail as to how we receive the money and what it's dedicated for.
President Finney. If you don't know, if you didn't know Clarissa, Clarissa was one of the early on supporters of the Shade Tree Commission and the Shade Tree Society. She was a life member of the Shade Tree Society. Every year, she made a significant contribution to the Shade Tree Commission. And she also, almost every year, donated a tree to be planted in memory of someone, a friend or whatever that she knew. Clarissa truly had a love for the trees and the trees in our community. And it's absolutely great that she thought of the Shade Tree Commission, which I know she loved very much. And hopefully, the commission will take this funding and put it to the best use in Clarissa's name.
Absolutely.
Legislation. I have nothing to report. Councilperson Williams, Parks and Recreation.
Well, I will remind everyone one more time that Parks and Rec is sponsoring a Halloween event in Locust Street Park from 4:00 to 8:00 on October 31st. So come and dress up and see your friends. Hinkle's is providing refreshments and we're really, really grateful for that. Additionally, we are planning a gingerbread house display on December 5th. So you will be making your gingerbread house at home and then bringing it to the Market House. And that display, all your friends and family can come through and see all the gingerbread houses. And I think the display will be up for a week. So, yeah, plan your, plan your house. Thank you.
All right. Personnel. Councilperson Williams, anything?
Yes. Going back to what was talked about with the polling places and the police department, isn't there a perimeter set up for the police around a polling place that they are not supposed to be there? So if you're going in because someone has a gun or... And I'm not suggesting you can't answer those kind of calls. I'm just questioning that because I was a poll reader one year and we were told that the police had a perimeter they weren't to because they were viewed as possibly intimidating by standing there. So there is, I think, a legal perimeter. I don't know the distance without looking at my map, but I think there's a certain number of feet that they have to stay away from the polls.
Yeah. I'm not sure if nor the actual measure and I can tell you by practice, we stay away from the polls. We'll assist with parking issues primarily. More will follow to the location.
Okay. Thank you.
Sharon, that perimeter also goes for candidates seeking elected office and poll people working for those candidates. They must maintain.
But it's a different number of feet for each?
Yes.
Oh.
It's 100 feet.
Oh.
And that's what my concern was with not just one person who went to the facility with a gun who had been in here. This article was pertaining to groups that would show up and be at for the location.
Thank you. Thanks, Susan, because I didn't know the number of feet. That's all I have.
All right. Public Works and Property. Councilperson Fitzgerald.
Thank you. Thank you to Mr. Graham for his monthly report. Just to repeat, leaf collection begins next Monday, the 19th. And then the following Monday, the 26th, is the last day for curbside yard waste pickup. If you have anything beyond that date, you can take it directly to the farm. First Saturday of the month, 8 to... The second Saturday of the month. And is that 8 to 12?
8 to 12.
Okay. Was there anything else you wanted to highlight on there, Mr. Graham?
I was just going to bring up the Shawnee Run stream marshes. I'm not sure if anybody's been there, bothered, or seen that, but wow, it's really looking good. You know, we got to start legal on that project with, I guess, about the middle of September. But they're down to probably a week or so to where it'll work and then it'll be finished up.
I want to get out there this weekend and see.
It looks great.
Does it?
Yeah.
And if I'm not mistaken, that goes about 75% of our MS4 mandate for the Phase 3 whip, they're killing.
Wow.
We're further ahead in a lot of boroughs to come to store order that in the mandates.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Graham. And second of all, the Market House. I just have to say I was over today and I am so excited to come to the Market House. It's bright. It's beautiful. The kitchen area is very impressive. The floors are so well done. They're just starting the process of laying the bricks. They're saying for opening by November now, they're saying?
So we're still, right now, we're still aiming at the major construction being done at the end of this month, down to simply the punch list items of final cleanup and check. I've already talked to staff that I want to start now going through and inspecting as much as we can of what is mostly finished so that the punch list at the end is as small as possible. We've been catching a lot along the way. We meet on a regular basis to go through everything with them. So the project should be finished up around the end of October into November. We have finalized the contract and waiting for it to be signed with Gypsy Kitchen. So they are excited about coming in. They have been on site to look at the kitchen setup and walk through everything. We will have a final date with them as to when they can get in, how much time they need to get open. But they are hoping to be open before the end of Thanksgiving or before Thanksgiving time in the November.
Excellent.
Yes.
That's it?
All right. Safety. Councilperson Gerard.
Thank you, President Zink. In your packets, you'll find the public safety reports for September 2020 submitted by the Columbia Borough Police Department, Columbia Borough Fire Department, Columbia SVEMS, as well as the codes and compliance report and the planning and zoning report. And also in there is the EMOC reports from Jay Barniger. I would like to read one bullet point item from Jay's report, if I might. It is, it is fall. Winter's coming. Days are getting shorter. It's getting cooler. We are inside more often. Even though we're all in the green phase right now, that doesn't mean that the pandemic is over or that we can stop following any of the recommended procedures, guidelines, the guidelines that we've been practicing controlling the spread of COVID-19. I ask that the borough residents be vigilant and to continue to practice social distancing, wearing face masks in public, keep gatherings to less than 25 people. This will be crucial in combating a potential resurgence of COVID-19 in the upcoming months. That's all I have.
I have a question about the codes compliance report for September. I noticed in the table where it has the number of inspections and obviously, we've not been doing them. How far out are we going that we're not? I mean, has a determination been made whether we're going to resume those inspections or at this point, or are we just kind of on hold?
We're still on hold on any inspection of an occupied property just out of safety concerns for our staff. If it's unoccupied, for example, if someone is trying to sell their home and then they agree that it would only be them and a Realtor or someone walking through, we can do those type of inspections. But anything that's a rental inspection is occupied, at this time, we're not going in still.
And there's no, but there's been no determination as to when we're going to start that back up again?
No, and I'm in conversation with other municipalities and talking with them, and everyone's on the same... We thought we'd be back into it by now, but which is out of abundance of caution. And if you were hearing on the news that there is concern of resurgence now, a lot of that has been around large gatherings such as universities or other things. But it's out of safety of our staff. We just have not yet, and a lot of other municipalities have not yet done the occupied structure inspections yet.
Anyone else have questions, concerns? All right. Stanford Courts, comments and announcements. Evan, anything for us?
I don't really have a whole lot. I will tell you, the main thing that I've gotten done in the last, you know, since we had our meeting last week was getting that lease to Gypsy Kitchen.[1789.64] So they are, they have their lease now and we're just waiting to hear back from, from them with that. So that's moving forward and we've got a lot of, obviously a lot of other hats in the ring, so we'll, we'll keep working on everything.
Derek.
So Jay highlighted the Shawnee Run project already, so I want to make sure everybody's aware of what's going on out there and make sure you take a look if you get a chance. The other project I want to note that we're kicking off recently here would be the 100 to 200 block of Walnut Street, Streetscape Improvement Project that is funded through the Smart Bird Grant we received from Mike St. Kelly. So that'll be a, be a pretty big project here moving into next year. So more to come on that, but we are in the preliminary design phase now of that project.
So council's clear. I see Derek all the time. I, I know that we, we have his announcements on, on the agenda. Derek and I have talked and he'll be attending now monthly to give it questions. If you have questions for him, if you have anything going on, he'll be here on the first meeting of the month.
I would like to just ask now, with a project like that, that's going to affect a lot of homeowners, I guess, along there, so where's our communication piece there as far as we're hiring someone to communicate about the McGinnis property? So I'm wondering, why not a project like this?
And if this comes to that level, since we have this firm on retainer, we could do that or we can do that ourselves. We have the ability now to go either way, but I, I will agree with you that I think as it moves forward and as there is construction that will impact homes and residences, I think the communication part will be very, very important.
If I could add more, we do have our team for this project as part of the Streetscape Master Plan. The borough has retained the services of YSM, the Landscape Architect for this project. And as part of YSM, it is some public relations.
Yeah.
There will be some community meetings.
Okay.
So while YSM is not a public relations firm, they do have a lot of experience in, you know, projects such as this, so they'll be providing their expertise in running public meetings.
Thank you. Well said.
Thank you.
Frank Dautry. The Walnut Street project, how is that funded? The 100 to 200 blocks?
The 100 to 200 blocks, the one right now, the Smart Bird Grant, I believe it was 700 and some.
It's about $800 and some thousand dollars that we are getting. It's, it's transportation money from the county's Metropolitan Planning Organization, the NPO. So they have, they have pots of money that they dedicate every year out of the transportation funding for streetscape improvements. So that's where the majority of the funding is coming from. The rest is money that we did budget for out of our capital improvement funds.
Do you know what our part is?
Our, our part is going to be dependent upon the final project cost. So once we get a final design and we get the project scoped out, we know what we're doing, then our, our part will be based on that.
But it's required, the amount that is required from us, the minimum of us, is 165.
Is this curb, sidewalk, storm drain, what, what all is this involved? Everything?
We're still in preliminary, but this, this is not going to be a lipstir project. This is going to be a significant streetscape project.
So you have sidewalks curving, if need be, mill and overlay of the road itself and then other, as we see as wants to go forward. But again, this will be a very public process and before anything is done, we'll have plans to show everybody what we, what we're looking at to do.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mark, Secretary Treasurer.
Thank you. So a couple of things we've already discussed then, but I just wanted to point out, Hope is doing a fantastic job down at the crossings. The, the Outdoor Corps is there this week. She and Jake worked together to come up with the projects that they're working on. If you have a chance to get down there and encourage them, I ask you to do that. This, this team's coming in, they're here for, I think it's three days now instead of four, but it's just a blessing to us to have them here and to have this work done. So that's, that's exciting. I've been down to Shawnee Run several times. I was down there just this morning to see it. Anybody, just take, don't, don't get in their way, but get down there and look at it. It really is, is an impressive difference to see, to see how this is going to work. And then it's going to be fun to watch this project as it matures over time to see how the improvement is along that stream. But the one piece of this that we, we had talked about was the bridge. If you guys remember, that we are not putting the bridge in, we're just simply setting the abutments up for it. And then Trinity House will be setting a bridge at some point in the future. So that, that will be part of this project, but that's not our cost. So that, we'll see that when it comes in. Some changes to the office, and this does affect your borough laptops. We are trying to improve how we, how we manage the software in our office. So working with Easy Computer Solutions, we have done two significant upgrades. One is that we are now using SharePoint. And SharePoint will allow us to easily share files, transfer large files back and forth, store files in the cloud so that council can go and see them, so we can make things available, make it easier to, to pass information back and forth. And we have also have migrated to Office 365, which is a cloud-based system, which allows us to have that functionality. So you'll, you'll see that in your systems, but I think that's going to help improve efficiency throughout our office and our ability to, to get that information shared back and forth.
Is there something we need to do?
No, no, if there is, I'll, I'll work with each one of you. Those upgrades should push through, but if Easy Solutions has to do anything, more often than not, they'll simply dial into your computer and fix it. If you have to bring it in, I'll work with you and I'll make sure you guys are all up to date on everything on that, okay?
So you're going on Teams?
Yes. It, well, yes and no. I mean, I, I like Teams. The problem we're having right now is Teams doesn't always offer a phone number to call in, so as long as everyone has good systems on their computers, you can use Teams great.
It's a difference of a license, it's a different license.
Yes, yes, but it's included in the bundle that we have. So we have Teams now.
Yeah, you just have to get the license reissued if you don't have a phone number.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
We had that problem at work. Half of us got, have dial-in numbers and half don't. So we had to get our licenses reissued.
And, and that, that will result in a savings for us because then we can terminate our contract with go-to-meeting, we'll use just Teams, which is already part of the bundle that we have. So we're trying to realize those efficiencies as we move forward. I want to talk briefly about the US 30 441 interchange in the north side. I know that prior to me coming here, there were some proposals to improve, follow me now, if you're going westbound on 30 and you get off in Columbia and you come up to the light.
Right.
There's currently a, a lane that goes to the right that takes you north up over Chickies Hill, and then a single lane that's either a through or a left that brings you into town. Now, the road is wide enough for two lanes there, but only one is striped. So we will be working with PennDOT to re-stripe that intersection so that you have a dedicated through that takes you on 441 in the bypass and a dedicated right lane that'll bring you into town on the third. Those plans were already drawn up, PennDOT had them all. We're now kicking that back into process. We had several, a couple of meetings with them and PennDOT, hopefully, will be getting their crews out there soon to re-stripe that, to make it clear which lanes go where. And we have a little cost in that into realigning the traffic heads on the, on the mast arms to clean it up. I think that's going to be an added safety feature there at that intersection to improve that traffic flow. So once that's all, all done, you'll see that improvement, but I want to make sure you guys are aware that those, those improvements are moving forward. Any questions on that one? We, we talked about it briefly earlier, but the, the Columbia-Riceville Bridge, PA 441 project has now gone to a, a virtual meeting. Frank, I hear you. It's frustrating that it's virtual and we can't all get together in a large room. Under the PennDOT's COVID protocols, they can't do those right now. So the, the meeting is all online. So if you don't have it, it's on our borough website. You can go see, you can click on the link and you can see the, the designs. If you have any questions, contact me and I'll be glad to walk anyone through what is being done out there and how it's being done and the, and the timing of this project. This is a very big project. As we have talked before, there's, it's being broken up into three phases. Phase one, the bridge will remain open and they'll be working on shoring up the undercarriage of the bridge structure. Phase two, there'll be a portion of that where the entire bridge will be closed and there will be a bypass to go back out around the 30 and come around again when they're working on the, the deck. And then phase three, it opens back up again and they're still working out the traffic patterns on that so they can finish up that work and then get the bridge done. So that's where we stand right now. I will, I will bring that forward as we, as we get more information. And the last thing I wanted to bring you up as a reminder, I've sent out several emails to you just as a, as a reminder, PSAB's Fall Conference is starting next week. The sessions are all free. If you want to sign up for any of them, you can sign up directly. If you have any questions or problems, please contact us and we'll make sure you get registered for any and all the sessions you'd like to attend this year. Thank you.
All right. Boards, Commissions, and Committees. On the public calendar, there was a budget meeting scheduled for this Thursday, but we have discussed everything we were going to discuss about. We did that at the October Work Meeting, so that budget work, work meeting is canceled. Tuesday, October 20th, Planning Commission. 6:00 PM, there is the comprehensive plan portion and at 7:00 PM is the regular meeting. Wednesday, 10:21, council will be sitting in place of the HARP to hear the, to hear the historic cases that need reviewed and we will be voting on those.
Is that meeting at 7?
Yes, that is at 7.
Question, David?
That is the 21st, Wednesday. Mark is working to get the stuff out to us on that meeting as soon as possible so we can review that. I will say that we had a meeting last week with, Sharon and I met with several of the HARP members. At this time, it does not look like anyone is coming back, so we will, do we have to formally accept those resignations?
So we did not last time, so I'll put them on the agenda for the, the next meeting to formally accept their resignation of the board members.
I, the main concern that I will share is that while we all sat here and said, you know, we supported the historic district and were in favor of the historic district, the feeling was, there wasn't really the support to do what's necessary to, to support it. It was, it seemed disingenuous. So we have to work on getting a new HARP seated or else, until we do, we're coming in the third Wednesday of the month and hearing these cases. On Thursday, 10:22 is the Columbia River Park Advisory Committee. And am I reading this right? It's at Borough Hall this time?
So we talked about moving them to Borough Hall. I think we're going to continue them at the crossings through December and then the January meetings will start here in Borough Hall.
Okay. Monday, 10:26 is the Shade Tree Commission. That's at 5 o'clock, is it?
Six.
6 o'clock. All right. Burke, Council Comments.
I have a question.
Yes.
And maybe this one's best for Mark. When we were speaking about communication, I wondered about the newsletter. Where are we at with that? I haven't seen it yet, so.
It, it went out.
So the newsletter did go out.
When?
It was in, it was in the merchandising.
Including the merchandise.
Oh, okay.
I threw my merchandisers out.
I do?
And I don't think, I would really recommend not doing that anymore. So many people chuck them.
What's that, the secretary do that?
Yeah.
It's an insert. So did we pay the merchandiser to mail them?
Yeah, to include it in their delivery.
And did we save money by doing that?
Yes.
Okay.
So what, what we have talked about is for, for next year's publication is instead of trying to do a biannual newsletter, more fully utilize our, our website and other tools that we currently have. And we've talked about putting together an annual calendar that would have all the key dates and information and stuff in it that people could have throughout the year. We are gathering pictures right now of scenes around Columbia and we would like to put together a calendar that we can send out once a year to all the residents. They have them, they'll be available to pick up here and that would, that would, because most of what goes in a newsletter are when, when does yardways pick up? When do these things? We can set all those dates at the beginning of the year, we'll have them in, in the calendar so it goes out to everybody, everyone has them. And then other information won't be in a printed paper newsletter. It can go out through either the Facebook page or the website.
I like the idea of the calendar, but I'm wondering now, we did pay for the newsletter, right? I mean, was that just a once and done?
A once and done, yeah.
Okay.
Is there a copy on the website, right?
A copy of the newsletter, I believe so, yes. We'll make sure it's, it's there. Yeah.
I have a comment. It might be helpful to confirm the trick or treat, how that's going to work. Is there trick or treat on Friday? Is there not?
Well, that's, it's not a municipality-controlled thing. If people want to participate, they can participate and if they don't, they don't. We, we are in the Lancaster.
Intermunicipal Committee.
Intermunicipal Committee, which sets the date for all of Lancaster County and they have set the trick or treat date as Friday, the 30th. I don't really think it's up to us to encourage or discourage trick or treat. It's.
So people who want to do it can do it.
But they encourage it on the same night, so the people are aware, the kids are out there. That's the reason you coordinate it.
Yeah.
I did have a resident ask me about, about the Halloween parade. There is no Halloween parade this year, so if anybody's listening and curious, there's no Halloween parade this year.
No.
Correct. Any other?
No.
I just wanted to say I received a letter from the Columbia Economic Development Corporation. I'll have this scanned and sent to everyone, but basically it's inviting all of council to their meeting on November 12th. I did see an event created on Facebook for it, inviting people to join via Zoom, but we are all invited to attend, but we'll need the RSVP, but I'll send, I'll make sure this gets scanned and, and emailed out for everyone to see. And last call. Any other comments, questions, concerns? Nothing? All right. Announcement of next meeting at 6:30 PM on October 27th, 2020. Council will hold an information session to receive information from its borough manager and solicitor prior to the regularly scheduled meeting at 7:00 PM. And could I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilperson Kaufman, a second by Councilperson Leonard, to adjourn the meeting at 8:53 PM. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? That's a wrap, folks. Woo woo.